Welcome. If you'll please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for joining us this evening to our regular Board of Directors meeting. The first order of business will be to adopt our agenda.
Move that we adopt the agenda?
Second. So move the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Our next order of business is to excuse Director Rogers from the meeting if we can have a motion.
I move to excuse Director Rogers from tonight's meeting.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to note, there's any scouts in the audience that we can introduce? Just want to make sure. All right. Next is our special recognition, which is introduction of new administrators. Are we bringing up Janay for this?
Yes. Janay is coming up for this. Not sure whether she was aware of it, not that she is. She was aware of it. She's aware of everything.
Thank you. We are going to start with Michelle Preston. If you wanted to come up. Michelle has been a special education teacher with us since 2013. I think she began at Union. Michelle's also a name and a face that you'll recognize who helped significantly organize the boundary invasions over the summer that was drafted by the school board. And so, I wanted to make sure I highlighted that based on what they had asked. And she has a very unique background with all kinds of different assignments. And so I've asked her if she would share those because I know that I wouldn't remember them. But Michelle is going to be an associate principal at Emerald Elementary part-time next year, in addition to also fulfilling a special assignment through special education, I think, at the elementary schools. And then also, we asked Heather Tissin to come up and talk about Michelle as well. But while she's coming up, I'll have Michelle share with you her history here.
Thank you. First, I want to thank you, Mike, and also the school board. I started my group, and my family, of course, and my friends. And Heather here. But I started my career in dog school systems overseas in Germany. I started as a kindergarten teacher, long-term sub. And then the next year, I actually filled in as a long-term sub for my German teacher that I actually attended the school. It's where I grew up, was 22 years in Germany. And then the following year, I did Germanist again. And I was a K-8 teacher at that point. Then I stayed home with my kids for when they grew up. And that's one of my sons right there. He's my youngest. My other two are, one's at ASU and joined the Sun, and the other one is in Guam, serving for the Air Force. And so I came into the district as a para, when I went back to school to get my special ed endorsement. I always had a love for students with special needs. And so, I think it was like two and a half years I was a para in all different programs. I did SLC, ALC, life skills, and learning support. After that, I opened up the program at Union, life skills program there. And I was there for four years. And then I went over to special learning support at Shaheila Middle School. And then from there, I became an interim associate principal at Pacific Middle School, where I'm at right currently, right now. And I've had an amazing experience there. And so I'm really excited about this opportunity to be at Emerald Elementary and also work with the special ed department as a special ed coordinator, I believe is the title. I'm not too sure, but that's what I think it is.
Yeah.
Whatever. I get to work with my underserved populations, and I'm super excited about that. So, thank you all for this opportunity.
So, we have just been very fortunate to have Michelle join us because she brings a passion for equity, both for, specifically for our special education students, but really for all of our kids. On a daily basis, you can see her working with students, inviting parents in to have meetings with them, facilitating restorative conversations with whole classrooms and kids, and even restorative conversations between families who, whose students may have had some conflict. So, we are very sad, obviously, that she's not with us because we would just like to keep everybody and Trevor and just keep them all with us. But I'm so excited for the opportunity.
I'm here if you want to talk.
It's okay. I think I'm okay. We, I'm so proud of the work that you have done for us. And I just wish you all the best. The kids at Emerald are really lucky. And I just told her, she's still, she's still working for Pacific because some of those kids are going to come to us anyway. So she's just going to get to them before, before I can. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
So this is my lovely husband, Kyle. He's a teacher at Cascade Middle School. And then my daughter, Josephine, and my son, Liam. And then my friends are here, too. They're here to support me from Shaheila. And this is Jen Jones, and this is Mary Ann Carter and Mallory Spears. Thank you, ladies, for showing up for my birthday and celebrating with me. So, it's been a birthday.
And of course, I don't feel like it would be, honestly, Michelle's done a great job. And she does a great job every day. And we're lucky to have her accepting the position at Emerald. It's a new opportunity to support special ed kids throughout the district. But I also feel it would, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Kyle's father coached me in high school. I know how much you enjoy having the opportunity to share connections. Kyle was a ball boy for some of the teams that we had back in the day. And he's been a great teacher in the districts as well. There's no question about that. So, thank you very much. Great to have you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Trevor Person. If you want to come on up. Trevor is the new associate principal at Pacific Middle School. And he, we're welcoming him back home to Evergreen. So he used to be a teacher with us. And I'm going to let him share a little bit about what your past is and ask more than you want to talk as well.
First of all, I want to thank the board and Mr. Merlino. Very excited to be back in the district. I started my teaching career at Heritage High School. Talked there for eight years. And I got an opportunity to travel up to Longview to be the athletic director and assistant principal at RA Long High School for the past two and a half years. Learned a lot. Very thankful for my opportunities there. And then was fortunate enough to be able to come back to Evergreen Public Schools. And I'm thankful. And I did get to teach Julie's son, Zach, at Heritage, which was, he was an amazing student, really funny kid. So, I'm glad to do that. Yes. And I'm very thankful for my family. There's Paige there. She's a counselor at Union High School. And then we had Micah.
You can wave, Micah.
And then Beckett.
Beckett, can you wave?
I don't know if Liam and Josephine got an opportunity to wave, too.
Yes. So, I joked a little bit with Trevor, but this is actually kind of a thing. It's like I'm a mom of a boy, and he's got two boys. So we're already bonding there because, you know, we just love our sons. But we are very excited to have Trevor come. He really, really impressed us with his passion for equity, your creativity, and just your willingness to step in and help everybody grow in your organization. So we, every year, we do a shirt for our staff. And this year, our motto was first things first. So, welcome to Pacific.
Thanks.
And I wanted to share that Darcy had a prior commitment, so she wasn't able to be at this evening. And so I just wanted to make sure to share it.
We're really excited to have both of you.
Yes.
It's great for the school district. And I love having people leave and then come, I mean, that's why other people leave. But the fact that you want to come back. I mean, there's just two meetings in a row where we've had a staff member leave the district, be successful in another district, and then choose to come back to Evergreen, which is a great tribute to Evergreen. And I was, I was going to say, I babysat Trevor when he was a kid. That's, but it's not true. There's got to be some connection to everyone. But anyway, I would love to babysit. I didn't coach him either, no.
Paige has been my kid's counselor for 10 years now, Perkins would come through. So, I appreciate the gentle correction of the pronunciation of their last name. I've been doing it wrong for that long.
How do they pronounce it?
Perkins.
Perkins.
Your last name?
No, no.
I know your last name.
Percy, right?
Oh.
Just normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I kept correcting my kids.
Everyone wants to add an s or a s.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You have wonderful children as well.
I have wonderful children. Thank you.
Now you have somebody to speak German with.
Yeah, and it's like so much down.
It's very good to see you.
Wait, what, scouts in the crowd?
All right. Well, we're very excited for the both of you. Thank you for the work that you do. All right. So moving on is our next recognition, which it is Classified Employees Week. So we do, do we have people that are, yay! No, Ross offered to read it in German, but.
I'd be pretty impressed if it didn't.
Translate it, yeah.
Is someone coming up? Oh, okay. We'll go ahead and read the proclamation.
Well, actually, yeah. Though, I'm sorry, I was thinking about Janay. But yeah, you can have everybody come up. Whoever, I think you've got various people here from the group.
Do you want them to?
Yeah, sure. Everybody can come up.
No, she doesn't want to.
Or you can introduce the other folks once you come on up.
Yeah, come on up and introduce yourself.
We'll read the proclamation. We'll go ahead and read the proclamation first.
State of Washington proclamation. Whereas classified employees are involved in nearly every aspect of education, maintaining buildings and grounds, preparing and serving meals, keeping school facilities clean and orderly, assisting in the classroom, providing over 60% of all instructional hours to special education, English language learners and opportunity gap students, performing and conducting research activities, providing information technology and media services, administrative support functions, and safe transportation, creating a secure and healthy environment, and many other specialized services. And whereas these dedicated individuals who are the backbone of our public education system deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they do for this state, their communities, and the students enrolled in Washington's public schools, colleges, and universities. And whereas there are over 62,000 classified employees working with and helping students in Washington's universities, colleges, and public schools. And whereas classified employees are instrumental in fulfilling the state's responsibility to educate all students. And whereas by supporting the learning environment, classified staff are crucial partners with teachers, parents, administrators, and school boards. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 15th through 21st, 2020, as Classified School Employees Week in Washington. And I urge all people, people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed this 24th day of February, 2020, Governor Jay Inslee.
Thank you. I wanted to also share, so this is Sandy with PSE Large Group.
Who's going to receive it?
There's two.
One for each of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You, too.
And then Joy is representing her office by her phone. She's part of PSE.
She's our treasurer.
Gina Reitzman. And I'm Joyce Lewis. Is there anyone else out in the audience, PSE?
There's Nancy. She doesn't want to be recognized.
And Jill. So Jill Ziegler is.
Field rep.
Field rep with PSE and represents multiple chapters in different school districts. And so you're supporting as well.
Sandra, same, yeah?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to.
So, remember.
Yeah, so I want to say thank you to all of the work that you and everybody else does. I know you're up here representing everyone in classified. It's, without them, we wouldn't be able to run schools. And there's just so many important and vital positions that you do every day. And understanding we work across the table most times, but yet we always come to resolution and problem-solving work towards the same goal. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do and that you're doing and you're doing and do as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just like, I think we've always had a great relationship with PSE over the years. I've been around a while in the district. So, I've enjoyed the opportunity to negotiate with a lot of different folks within PSE. And it's always been collaborative and been successful. I appreciate that. Also, note that, and obviously Austin, I don't know if we mentioned Austin, he's a classified employee in the district as well, supporting us in the meeting today. And Lori is a classified employee as well. And actually, I came from a classified background. My daughter's a DL para at Columbia Valley. My sister's a para at Evergreen High School. So, I've certainly got a connection with classified staff and making sure that they feel valued and understanding how important their jobs are every day in a school district. Every job is important. But I know a lot of times, classified folks can feel like, you know, they're maybe the last ones that are thought of, the first people that pick up kids. We say it every year, bus drivers. You're very familiar with that?
25 years.
The last one that gets to drop kids off at home, 25 years, bus driver? Yeah. So you've had plenty of opportunities to do that. And just throughout the day, kids' interactions with them. And there are so many staff that are so devoted and dedicated to our kids. And it doesn't end with the teacher in the classroom. It certainly goes throughout the district. So I know personally, I just want to say thank you and how much I appreciate everything that all of you do on a daily basis. And I'm sure I jumped ahead of each of you, wanted to say something, too.
Yeah, I would absolutely agree. I think Janay said it best, we can't run school without all of you. And I think the community probably would be surprised about the amount of people that it takes to run schools in a school district from our facilities and warehouse and buses and, you know, and the people that are working one-on-one with kids. It's amazing how, you know, it takes everybody to keep the big wheel moving along. Kind of like, that's a pun for the buses, right? But really, it takes an incredible amount of work by everyone. And I just want to say thank you.
No, and I also second that. It, you know, I think the relationships that I've had with different people in the school district over the years, you know, when my kids were coming up through the system and the secretaries, you know, the first people that greet our kids when they get to school and, and. Yeah. I mean, really. And it's just, you know, I know my girls have benefited from wonderful people that, now that they're grown up, that they still remember. And it made a difference in their lives when they were coming up in the system. So, I appreciate everything that you do for us. And it's great that we can, thank you at least once a year. But we thank you every day when we know what a difference you make. We really do.
Every building secretary I've ever met knows 500 children's names by the first month of school. I sit in all of town like that. That's just, I don't know how I could do it.
To be honest, I would remember the ones that get sent to the office a lot.
I'm sure there are tricks and things, but those are the ones that need to love, right?
That is true.
And I found it to be true. It's like every bus driver knew my children's names and didn't care. And I don't think, it's like Mike said, I don't think it's possible without parent educators, unclassified staff. I know it's not possible to ID anymore. And believe me, I know it. And I just be thankful for getting into work that, it doesn't pay a lot. It doesn't pay as much as great professions or, you know, even though this is a great profession. And you know that people who go into the work have a good heart for kids.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move that we approve the Board's Consent Agenda?
Second. Move the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Superintendent Consent Agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we accept the Superintendent Consent Agenda as presented. Second?
Move the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next is our Superintendent Report. So I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Merlino for an update.
I just wanted to really quickly report that we continue to kind of monitor and respond to the coronavirus situation. We receive bulletins from OSPI. We see the news reports. We see everything that's going on with respect to that. We send out another, I sent out another parent letter, community letter today. Honestly, you know, there's been one reported case thus far, at least the last time I checked, that could have been updated because things change. Our, our main focus has been really kind of listening to community, the Department of Health, Clark County Department of Health. I would say thank you to Holly Long, who's our, I don't, you know, I don't know titles. She's the nursing services manager that is the conduit to the health department. And we meet every morning. We started this last week, meeting every morning, kind of just having a daily update on what the most latest information is so that we can react in any way. We continue to recommend what the health department talks about, making sure that kids are washing their hands, that everyone is washing their hands. We monitor, we still have events scheduled, and we listen to the sponsoring, you know, Key Club, I think canceled one recently. So there, we just have things evolving on a daily basis. I think that the newest information that we share today is just that families should start looking at whatever kind of childcare options they might have in case we do get a directive from the health department to close the school. Not saying that it is imminent or that we would do that. But actually, in, I think, the only district locally, not in Clark County, but we saw Hillsborough School District with a middle school with a student who had tested positively. And they've continued to operate schools. They have not closed schools. But that doesn't mean that, who knows how things evolve as the days progress. And so that was just kind of information that we put out that people may want to start thinking about that should something like closure be required. We're on top of it. We're monitoring it on a daily basis. We're trying to communicate as often. We also sent out a separate one to our building administrators, just kind of updating them on how we're working on things. It's something, like we had measles last year. We've got coronavirus this year. It's just something that we have to constantly be working with. We've, we field calls from staff within the district. We're keeping a database of any staff members that have concern about a, that they're in a risk classification, if they've got some underlying case. We're collecting that information as it comes in. Our nurses have information from students already. We've worked with some families in a couple of different situations on folks that would rather attend home choice than be in the general population. We're working with that on a daily basis. And we'll continue to do that as we move forward. But like, I think we say in every one of these emails, the information just keeps changing on a daily basis. And we'll just keep monitoring it. I would also mention a group that apparently is trying to finish the legislative session as quickly as they possibly can. It ends soon, but as I understand it, they came to some agreement on the state budget, the state legislature did. And we believe we're going to see that information as of tomorrow. Again, the biggest thing at this point is whether or not the state is going to put any additional funding into special ed. They also had a proposal to put some funding into counseling positions. We're not sure which one of those is going to end up prevailing. But I think they're trying to get out of town as quickly as they can. They have a hard time, and it has nothing to do with coronavirus, but they just have a hard time staying healthy because of the schedule that they, I'm talking about legislators, that they deal with on a daily basis in the 60 days or the longer session that they're in. So we believe, we believe we'll see something tomorrow on the state budget. And as soon as we do, I will share any details that we have with you that I'm able to do. But really, we're trying to focus at this point on just responding to working with our kids, keep their hands washed, keep themselves clean as much as possible, and monitoring the situation and responding to it. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Next is monitoring district operations. The first one is a second reading of Operational Expectations OE 12, which is facilities, interpretation and indicators. I'm going to turn this over to Mike.
Yes. OE 12 is around facilities. The main piece of this, first of all, this is the second reading. We've had the first reading two weeks ago. We talked about it in a workshop. There haven't been any changes. But this is around the superintendent assuring that physical facilities support the accomplishment of the Board's results policies. As I mentioned, there haven't been any changes. We've workshopped it. We've had a first reading. At this time, I recommend the Board accepts the proposed revisions for OE 12 facilities interpretation and indicators as presented for approval.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience? All right, then we will call for a motion.
I move the Board accepts the proposed revisions for Operational Expectations OE 12, facilities interpretation and indicators as presented for approval.
Second. All right. It's one move and second. And we'll go ahead and open it up to questions or comments from the Board.
Actually, I did have something that doesn't come as a disruptive surprise, or I'll just withdraw it. But because we're on second reading, on OE 12.1, under evidence compliance, you've written asset preservation program and capital renewal project lists as presented to the Board annually. And of course, for the last number of years, that's been a regular part of the process. And at that moment, you also always present the maintenance plan, and we review that as well. Would you be willing to insert the language "and maintenance plan" between capital renewal project list and "is there" so that we can include it in evidence compliance?
Yeah. I see Sue shaking her head vigorously.
I was almost going to ask, oh, is it?
Asset observation is just another name for the maintenance plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same.
Oh, that's what I was wondering. That was because that's all the project list that's going to be worked on.
Or program. All right.
Does that work?
APP is the, is the maintenance.
Is the maintenance plan. Well, then, I don't need it to be inserted at all. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? That's all you have, Ross? Is that one?
Yeah. Just making sure I make the connection between the two things.
All right. So, seeing no other questions or comments, we'll now take a vote to accept the proposed revisions for Operational Expectations OE 12, facilities interpretation indicators as presented for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. That one's approved as presented. So the next one is Operational Expectations OE 7, which is asset protection. This is a first reading, which means we workshopped it in our last Board workshop. So I'm going to turn this over to Mike. Someone turn this over to Mike.
Yes, we did talk about it in workshop. OE7 is Asset Protection. There weren't any changes to the policy. There were just deletions from what had been in. So, basically, what this Asset Protection says, the superintendent will assure that all district assets are adequately protected, properly maintained, appropriately used, and not placed at undue risk. And it outlines, the superintendent will maintain insurance, both property and casualty insurance coverage, maintain errors and omissions and comprehensive general liability insurance, adequately protect against theft or misappropriation of funds, protect intellectual property, information files, records, and fixed assets. There were a few things that said that the superintendent may not do that were deleted. What we've left is, the superintendent may not recklessly expose the district, the board, or staff to legal liability. Deleted, allow facilities equipped to be subject to improper use or insufficient maintenance. The feeling was that that was taken care of under the maintenance plans that we're presenting. We also eliminated invest funds in investments that are not secured or that are not authorized by law. By law, we can't do that. We only can invest through county investments which are protected by the law. So, didn't feel like that there was a need. May not purchase, lease, or sell real estate, including land and buildings. That again, is something that board action is required on all of those things. So, rather than have it saying, "You shall not be able to do", it's not something that could happen. And then, take any action that damages the district's public image or credibility. We eliminated that as well. We, I think we talked about focusing on the recklessly expose the district, the board, or staff to legal liability. So, basically, this is the Board's policy, their recommendation to the Board. We would come back and actually, we'll talk about, I think, in workshop, some of the indicators and evidence of these things in the workshop. So, I would recommend that we move this forward for approval for first reading and move it to second reading.
All right, questions or comments from the audience? All right, then we will take a motion from the Board.
Okay, I move the Board accept proposed revisions for Operational Expectations OE7 on its first reading and advance it to second reading.
Second.
All right, it's moving to second and we'll open it up to the Board for questions.
I think this one is mostly guided by state law. So, we don't have a lot of discretion here about how we have to do this. So, it's pretty straightforward. But it's very important that we follow the rules and that we are very diligent in how we do it.
Any other questions or comments? No, okay. All right, then we'll now take a vote to propose revisions for OE7 Asset Protection and move it forward to a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, we'll move back to our next meeting, the end of March. All right, next up is Board comments. So, comments by the Board Directors on everything that's been happening. Sure we've been up to it and things. Jenny, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I can start us off. I guess really hasn't, we haven't had a lot going on. We did a principal for a day on Friday, so that was great. We had Linda Glover there with us and a couple of other people, a gentleman from CTRAM, I believe it was. So, yeah, it was a great conversation. It was, we kind of did everything backwards, so we shook it up a little bit, but it was fun. I always enjoy getting to meet, sit down and talk to people that had just gone through the school and get their take on it. Most of them hadn't been in schools in years. So, just kind of getting the feel of how, as citizens or community members, how they, what their perceptions were when they went into the schools. And it's, sometimes it's good to get fresh eyes looking at stuff. So, I always enjoy what they have to say and to share with us.
Well, I'm sure Linda had an interesting perspective because she's been a teacher and a principal.
Yeah, she said it was very hard. She just wanted to get down and teach with them because they were doing a bunch of, you know, cool, new, I guess, learning activities that, you know, it's been a long time since she's taught. So, the way that they're teaching now is a lot different. And she said it was hard. She just wanted to kind of jump in and start teaching the class, so that's good.
She also spoke well of remembering, you spoke well of the district. She remembered as a principal in mid-'90s aspiring to change the system in certain ways and came back to see that much of that was in action and working for kids. We had a really good conversation with her and the others there. Sean Donahue from CTRAM was part of the Opportunity Pass effort, the secondary kids with free bus passes. So, we got a chance to thank someone from CTRAM for that tremendous outreach. Sue Ostrom was there from Mill Plain United Methodist, really active faith partner of the congregation. And it was just a good conversation overall.
I think Lori Lebowski was there too at one of the buildings, but she couldn't show up. She couldn't be there for lunch.
Oh, good. Sorry I wasn't able to be there.
I did see one of Lori's, Lebowski's posts that she put on social media about her experience for principal of a day. And she put something about which I thought it was nice that recognized that half of Vancouver's, because when we think about city of Vancouver, sometimes people identify with downtown, that half of Vancouver's students are attending Evergreen schools. And so, it was important for her to recognize that, that, yeah, we're over here too. Evergreen.
And we had that conversation with a couple of city officials before. They're usually pretty receptive. I attended Columbia Valley's Green Eggs and Ham event and really enjoyed talking with some of the kids. I was standing to the side of the line while they were waiting to get their Dr. Seuss hats. And one kid says, "I have a question." It was a little first grade kid. "Are you wealthy?" He asked me if I was wealthy. "You've got such a nice jacket on, you must be rich." I really didn't know how to answer that, but we talked a little bit later and I said, "I haven't learned your name." And he said, "My name is Dr. Seuss and I haven't learned how to wear the hat yet." I'm sorry. I had a fun conversation with the kids like that. Just kind of playing with them with that. We also had a chance to sit down and talk about equity and inclusion with Leo Torres for about 20 minutes. And just do a little problem solving, an unsolvable, you know, unsolvable in 20 minutes type of problem and really got him a little better and gained a lot of confidence about how Columbia Valley is being administered and run. And every adult there seemed to know 500 names. It was amazing just watching that.
Yeah, it was so incredible.
I think the most, changing gears for a little bit. Impressive thing that I saw at Crestline after the, after the principal for a day luncheon was that one of the grades was finishing up lunch and the room was quiet. Cafeteria was utterly quiet and every child was chewing food, which is not something I've ever seen in an elementary school ever before. And turns out to be in normal parts. The last five minutes of lunch, they focus on their food before going back to class. It's like a mindfulness exercise. Got home and explained it to my family and then I said, "Oh, yeah, we've been doing that for years in elementary schools where you've been, Rob." So, I was glad to finally notice that. So, let's talk about the groundbreaking.
Well, I was there, as you all were as well. The groundbreaking for three, what I would consider specialty schools, Legacy, the new, I haven't got the name.
Hollingsworth.
Hollingsworth Academy and Transitions. And that was, it was a beautiful day. It was a fun event. Definitely a good time was had by all, I think. And it was very exciting to see after years of wanting something to happen, it's happening and it was, I thought, one of our best groundbreakings ever. So, that was fun. I too attended a Dr. Seuss event over at Sunset and got to help put the hats on the heads. And then, I was big into taking a poll as to who thought green eggs tasted better than yellow eggs. Kind of a 50-50 split. Lots of conversation about, you know, the whole idea of it all and a lot of interesting comments by kids and parents alike. But it was a really fun time and those folks from beaches are really into it. And they've been doing it for such a long time and they still come with so much enthusiasm about the event. And it was fun to see and talk to them about it too. You know, another, you know, we do our school improvement plan meetings with our, all of our schools every year. And we've been doing them on alternate Tuesday nights from our board meetings. And I've been just so impressed with the kind of information we've been getting from our schools and the work that's being done and listening to their focus on the new reading curriculum at the elementary schools and feeling good about that purchase that we made. It was a big ticket item. But I'm so glad that we carved that money out, protected it when we were doing the budget cuts because it's making a huge difference across the district. And so, that's been really gratifying to hear that. And then, just listening to everybody talk about how much they're really getting out of it. So, that's been good. I was honored to represent the Board at the auditor's entrance meeting. Always a good time, meeting the auditors. And so far, it seems like things are going well with their, with the audit and nothing looks askew from what they're, they've said to me during the meeting. So, they should be wrapping up fairly soon and they'll let us know when they're ready to have the exit audit, which is always a little more of a nail biter. But I think we'll do really well. So, I was pleased to hear that they, they said that they appreciate how easy we are to work with and how everybody's been very open and transparent about everything. So, that's good. Well, I have to add to tonight's festivities.
I too attended a Green Eggs and Ham. I went to Harmony. It was a lot of fun, very similar experiences Victoria and Rob had at their schools. I'm always curious to the kids if they're eating their eggs or not. Fruit Rollups are a very popular item.
Yes.
But some of the kids are, you know, a couple bites of the eggs, some will eat them and then a lot of them go untouched. But, you know, it's fun for all the kids. And I also wanted to say thank you to the foundation for providing books for all of the first graders. I think they got a Dr. Seuss book, didn't they? Or is that the book they got was a great name?
I don't know.
There was an assortment of books.
And we also, they also get them in Spanish.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, so it was really nice, the foundation make sure that they're onsite and helping and giving out the books to the kids. I, last week on Friday, I went to Olympia for the Resolutions Committee meeting that I served on with WASTA. And the Resolutions Committee is about the permanent positions that WASTA holds for the, basically, you know, the bylaws and all of that. And then, all of the legislators, then it becomes a permanent position that things that WASTA board members believe in or members believe in. So, that was the work that was done that day, but we did get an update from Tim Gershaw about what the WASTA is doing to support schools right now through the coronavirus. And I also was, interesting conversation. I got to talk to a couple of the school board members from up north that are, one that where the district closed for two weeks and then another one in the W area. So, they're kind of in that, you know, central area where everything's happening. So, it was interesting to kind of get their perspectives on what their boards are going through and what's happening in their schools. But really, other than that, just exciting groundbreaking and some more coming up this month.
There's the Cascadia Foundation Dinner and I don't actually want this to go past without recognizing that at the dinner, they recognized Dale Lang, Long?
Lang.
Lang for his work over decades financing the building of houses by students in the Construction Technology Program and all of the other good work that goes on there. And I ended up, because I had some computers to donate, I ended up in a longish conversation about how pedagogy is changing in their information technology program and just came away with such confidence. That was the next day. But, yeah, I was at the Cascadia Academy twice, three times this week. Just went there to have breakfast.
Oh, at the restaurant?
Stellar, $8 cash for, you can't get good food at that price anywhere else. And it was wonderful stuff. And just being able to give students the opportunity to have that CTE experience and really build their professional acumen. I continue to just be impressed by that program and everything that's going on there. It was nice to honor Dale. Mayor McInerney Ogle was there. Lori Stroll was there. And a few other people from city and county. But it was a nice evening and had two really good meals.
That's always good.
Come on down, come on down to that restaurant.
What are the hours for the breakfasts? Is it like 9:00 to 11:00 or something like that?
Yeah, it's just about 9:00 to 11:00 on three days of the week. So, they will kind of do some lecture instruction on the Monday and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they have the morning open for that kind of thing.
So, check the schedule before you go, right?
And it'll be open until the end of the semester, I imagine.
Great. All right, anything else? All right, then we will go to future agenda items. Is there anything that we wanted to bring forward? Next is citizen comments. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Board? Do we have anybody on the list? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? Okay, so at this time, we will go into a recess where we'll sign documents. We will reconvene for a board workshop back in this room. We will do a student device plan and replacement schedule, student representatives discussion, Operational Expectations OE7 Assets Interpretation and the Indicators. We'll get a legislative update, another superintendent's update, and then a board meeting debrief. And then, we will do an executive session where we review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.